Good morning, it is nine o'clock and we are going to start the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Agenda today, all action will be taken on items unless otherwise noted, no action will take on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration, items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restriction must be reasonable, may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may now restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lyon Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this by separately posted agenda. Also, the meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Roll call today, we have all Commissioners in chambers. Indication today will be by Mitch Forster of New Hope Bible Fellowship.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we do address you as the creator of heavens and earth and all that is in them. Thank you that in you by all wisdom and knowledge, and we do pray for that today to have your mind in every issue that is discussed. We do pray, Lord, that we will stay true to our constitution, our Declaration of Independence, our Bill of Rights and the laws that have governed our country so successfully down through the ages, we pray that we will not depart from them. We do pray, Lord, that every person presenting today would do so in in an honorable way and peace and calmness. We do pray for clarity in everything that is discussed and we do pray that every side of every issue can be looked at fairly and honestly. So, Father, we just thank you for hearing our prayer and we trust in you for your blessing on this meeting. We pray in the name of Jesus, our Savior, amen.
Amen. Commissioner Keller.
Glad to entrance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the heavens above, where we are being judged as well.
Thank you.
Amen.
Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It's anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. We have any public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is George Robinson, I'd like to keep you apprised of what's happening out on Pen Hendricks Road or what affectionately called the cutoff. It's still the same, we come out, sheriff comes out and parks on the shoulder and the speed is reduced for maybe a half mile east direction and we're back to seventy miles an hour again. We don't write tickets. I could write twenty-five a day out there on a four-day weekend, three-day weekend. But we don't do that. I keep saying that were to get out that you're enforcing the speed limit, they will start slowing down. I talked to deputy the other day that was sitting out front, he says, well, it's faster to go down the highway to town. I says, it's only faster when you guys enforce the speed limit here. Didn't have anything to say about that. The other thing I got to say is, I see our new president-elect is going to start working on government waste. I was I'm throwing my name in the hat in case the county starts on theirs. I'd like to help you out and I won't charge you for it either. Thank you.
Any further comments in chambers? And I don't see any hands up on Zoom. So, we will move on then for possible action review and adoption of agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would like to pull items sixteen C and sixteen D.
Okay, I noticed we had covered those in a meeting previous. Yeah, the last two on the on the agenda. Those were covered in our last meeting there.
For a little bit of back, for a little background, they were intended to be a standing item until we found a interim solution and we ended up taking care of that at the last meeting, so, but this agenda was already created.
Anything further from the Commissioners? Anything from the public? If not, then I will look for a motion on five with pulling sixteen C and D.
Chairman Hockley, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda pulling sixteen C and sixteen D from the agenda.
By the second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes five zero, agenda will stand as that. Six, time certain at nine AM, we are at nine oh six. For possible action presentation given by Jim Peckham, Executive Director of Friends in Service Helping, Douglas, Carson, Lyon, Story Counties and beyond, it's our fish presentation, yes, sir.
Good day, thank you so much for allowing us to do this. I'm joined here with the President of my Board, Larry Warner, who interesting enough, you look back far enough in the history books, in nineteen seventy-one, he started your Public Works Department here in Yerington, worked in the in the Capitol Building, so he tells me if his memory is good, then that should all all come to play. So I'm going to go a little bit quicker through the presentation than what I normally would do. I had mentioned in a recent board meeting of mine that Fish has been around for almost fifty years and I've been running it for about fifteen and I'm still running into a lot of people that think we're a thrift store. And and we have thrift stores, but that just is one of our many funding types of things. And and Larry actually was the person said, well, how many times have you addressed the different government agencies that that we support in the counties and the cities and whatnot? And I said, actually, never, except for when we're trying to get, you know, something built or something that some, you know, something of that sort that sometimes causes controversy. And so now we're but we've, this will be our fourth of seven that we've got booked already and a couple more will be following. So a number of counties in the region will be hearing some of the same information that we'll be sharing today. So again, Friends in Service Helping, our full name is Friends in Service Helping Emergency Referral Services Program, Inc., so we go by FISH. It's a whole bunch easier. Thought I turned it on, but oh, there you go. There, all right, perfect, so we started in nineteen seventy-nine, a number of churches came together and said, hey, we're tired of people coming and barging into our our places, we need someplace to to send people for gas and food and other things that, you know, they need from an emergency standpoint, there weren't very many social services in the region. And so we started there and then we have since defined our mission to coincide with the with FISH, so we provide food, instruction, shelter, and healthcare to people in need. We train med students from UNR, nursing students from UNR in our medical clinic. It's a free medical clinic. We provide all the medicine and all the medical care. The doctors provide free time to us. We've got a free dental clinic clinic that we use in all the different counties, so we pay dental bills in the counties that we don't have a clinic in. We deal, we train social workers from all kinds of different colleges and whatnot, so whole lot of things that we do that that people aren't aware of. Am I working it or you? Outpoint and you can do it. So here's a most recent report, and you can see her doctor smiling in the middle because I pay her male practice, she doesn't have to. But we have batting room in Carson City, we've got three food banks, one in Dayton, one in the ranchos and and one in Carson. We've got homeless shelters, homeless shelter for men, homeless shelter for women, homeless shelter for families. We have thrift stores in Mount House, Minden and Carson, which generate about fifteen percent of our income, but also provide us with supplies so we can give them away. One of the unique things about FISH is we don't rely on the government for funding. And we don't, we try not to compete with government agencies and other nonprofits that are set up in the regions, we support each other, we share food, you know, we the we've sent tons of, literally of pet food in particular, up into into Lyon County because they keep running out of pet foods, people. They get excess bread, they'll send it down to us because we can distribute it faster than it'll mold. So we've got a lot of different relationships to remove things around and assist. And in a number of counties, they've asked us basically to take on some of the responsibilities that they had in the past. We're probably saving Carson City about ten million dollars a year, Douglas County probably five million. Lyon County, it's difficult for me to calculate, but I'm thinking a couple of million dollars probably. If this government tried to do what, all the different things that that we do. So about half of our budget has to do with with food, we run it about five point three million dollars right now, which we have to raise every year from the community, so just people who are willing to contribute to us, local foundations, corporations. We work very closely with all the grocery stores around regionally, you know, to pick up food and do different kinds of things, so we're very multifaceted, which is also a unique part of 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 our nonprofit, so and with the expansion of Lyon County in general, and I can, you guys know, stuff's happening, you know, and railway coming in and more and more businesses and everything else. Lyon County is the only county that we don't own a property. Every other place that we have a site, we actually own property. And so we've been looking for the last five or six years to try to find a good location to be able to provide some of those services. And again, predominantly, what our focus is to provide that food, instruction, shelter, and healthcare to people in need to help them become more self-sufficient. Our ninety-nine percent of our funding is local. About ninety-five cents out of every dollar goes into services. We run with about thirty employees, we've got over twenty unique sites and we've got about four hundred and fifty volunteers, so we work very closely with with those volunteers. And we collaborate a ton with other other organizations. So we, as we interact with different government agencies and different groups, we identify problems that are going on in the communities where there's not a service to take care of it. Back in two thousand ten, eleven timeframe, we started seeing tons of pain handlers in Carson and Douglas County. And so what we came up with something pretty creative, not really, a business card, who would have thunk? We call them dignity cards, so if somebody sees somebody panhandling, we encourage the public, don't give them food, don't give them money. You can make eye contact, have a conversation with them, give them a dignity card, they can come to us, they can get hot showers, they can get their laundry done, they can get food, we can get them set up with our housing or someplace else. If we have, if we don't have the service they need, we've got a connection with everybody else to know who to refer them to. It takes care of it. And that way, if somebody leaves town with a bunch of our business cards because they can't make enough money panhandling, we went as a community, if they come to us and they go into the the regional database that we have that we share with others, we can start tracking people and figure out what's going on with them. And if they're a manipulator, we stop serving them. In our, we talk about providing a hand up, not a handout, so if somebody's willing to put in some effort to change their life, we're going to help them all the way. If they're not willing, we say, come back when? Come back when you're sober, come back when you're less argumentative. You know, come back when you're serious. Anybody that comes to us multiple times, they have to set goals and accomplish those goals for us to keep giving them services, otherwise we start going back and we start saying a lot more of, come back when? You know, we've been talking to you for a year and a half about your sobriety. Come back when you've completed the thirty-day, you know, sobriety thing and then we can help you from there. You know, it's just, just a number of things going on. Then in twenty twelve, thirteen timeframe, there was a big issue in the region where we didn't have enough housing for veterans and people that were disabled. It was just, you know, during the the crisis when the economy was way down and and people were having challenges with all their mortgages and we found some property that we were able to purchase and eventually we built a thirty-nine unit complex called Richard's Crossing for disabled people and for for veterans, so and that as we were building it, we accepted government funding and and I learned my lesson not to do that. In part because there's a lot of red tape, in my opinion, and I apologize if you take that personally. But the other more important thing is the government was a housing-first model, so they said, you've got to let people move in and then if they want to take advantage of your computer lab, and we had a big warehouse where we're going to teach people how to drywall and fix small engines and do appliance repairs so that they came out of our program with a skill. They said, no, you can ask them if they want to volunteer and it's like people are like, I got my bait pen, my skateboard, and you're giving me a roof, nah, I'll pass on the rest. And we ended up selling for two hundred and forty thousand dollars because that's what we had into it without the government funding to rural housing and they took it over and won five awards for it. It's like, good job, they forget to mention us, but good job because it's still a good thing. So we continually try and do things of that sort. And again, we provide a hand up, not a handout, we're working to try and impact generational poverty. We know that if we can change people's behaviors, we'll change their lives. And and that's kind of our focus, so what we're doing right now is looking at a new, I guess I'm pointing at the wrong, wrong thing. We're looking at some new issues that are in the region, lack of affordable housing and lack of skilled workforce. And they kind of go hand in hand because even if somebody wants to hire someone from the outside, you know, from California or Utah or anyplace else, they come here and they can't find a place to live. So you can't really even import labor because of the housing shortages. And we think that instead of building more affordable housing, we have to make fewer people reliant on affordable housing. So what we're doing is going the wrong direction. There was a lovely motel built nineteen thirty-nine that motivated people to the entrepreneurial spirit. It's just the sheriff's department didn't really like what kind of entrepreneurs they were. And I'll leave it at that, so it's called the whistle stop in, if you've traveled to Carson years past, there's a little choo-choo train out front, spooky clown in a gazebo out front, a little glass gazebo. And so we thought, you know, it's time for us to to make some changes. So we decided that we would revitalize the town by getting rid of the nineteen thirty-nine motel that was full of drugs and prostitution and 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 other various things. And put in a nice building. We would revitalize the workforce by starting to train people in the trades, technology, and medicine, and then also impact in the actual families by revitalizing them and changing the way things work. So the next slide. So we just built what's now, what started out as a thirteen million dollar project and is now a nineteen million dollar project. Again, without government funds with the caveat, I did take, like, two years ago, I took the governor for a tour of all of our facilities and he was like, what don't you do? And then he said, how come we're not more involved? And I said, well, I'm not the right one to ask, but you guys bring a lot of red tape and so he arranged for three million dollars to come from the state with no red tape. And I'm glad that he accepted that and we moved on, so we didn't rely on them, but we're happy to take it if it's not too burdensome. So you've got thirty-six luxury apartments that we're renting to people who probably should have gone to college but never did. And if they're going into the trades, technology, or medicine, we're going to make it very affordable for them. We also working with the community college, the electrical union, the bricklayers union, a bunch of HVAC companies, car dealerships that need folks, the airports that need airplane mechanics. If we've got somebody that's in an internship or even a teacher that just got hired that can't afford to find a place to live and and be able to school because we, in order to have students, you got to have teachers too. All those types of folks can be in there, they can be fully furnished, they it's up to the people whether they choose all the furnishings, which is, you know, from glasses, dishes, tables, couches, beds, linens, or they can bring their own either one, we just don't want people to store their stuff and be paying bills to the storage unit. Hopefully none of you guys run a storage unit. But we want them to to get moving forward so they can get into into organizations. The expectation is that they'll make at least twenty-seven dollars an hour coming out of the program, they might have to go through multiple tiers of education to get to that point and then we will work with them to to move out into the the rest of the community by helping them get a job. We do, we've got a shuttle that takes people, we can do tours, you know, kinds of different things to to get them exposed to stuff. And now you guys are thinking, I thought you said you're going to do the short version. And it is. So we've got gazebo's, play areas, you can bring your pets, it's intended for singles, they can bring in a roommate, families, whatever, whatever it takes, it's about a block from our existing store in Carson City, which is probably I don't know, four blocks north of where Highway fifty comes into Carson. Go ahead. So we, in our communities, we ask people to get involved, to donate time. We have thrift stores and then and food banks who donate food, medical supplies, not medicine because there's laws, we can't handle somebody's something that they've had as a prescription, but we take boats and double wides and stocks, a lot of people, they have forced distributions and it's, if they've got ten thousand dollars worth of stock, if they just give it to us, they get a ten thousand dollar write-off. If they cash it and then they got to pay two thousand dollars worth of taxes on it and then we get eight thousand dollars and they get an eight thousand dollar write-off, so we found it's easier when we have our own stock program, so we've got a you know, a lot of people that that helps out in their wills and things of that sort as well and as we finish this up, I make my board swallow very hard because the other big issue in the region is homelessness. And the two biggest reasons we have homelessness is mental health and addiction. And we don't have any kind of program around. So we're going, we are piloting right now a one to three-year program to take some of the people that we've made some progress with and put them in in there, the rest of our shelters and everything else. They can't drink and they can't do drugs, or else we'll throw them out. With this one, we know that people will be on and off the wagon. And we're going to really focus on that and and try and expand that and justify buying a larger property. Probably more like when I was growing up, if somebody was poor, you sent them to a farmer and the farmer would make sure they got fed and worked and they would have skills when they left. So some kind of environment like that where, you know, working with growing plants through hydroponics and and have a little warehouse garden or field of you know, fields that will help supply our food banks and and give them some value. So again, we had a new logo revitalized the community. That's what we do. I think there's one more slide. But again, I'm always happy to do other presentations, always looking for volunteers. This slideshow doesn't do justice compared to a tour, anybody that's not that this is a terrible presentation, I hope. But once you go on the tour, it's like, wow, I I didn't think it was like this. So and I'm happy to answer any kind of questions and then the one last final slide is, if you're going through Carson, you'll see that on the wall of our thrift store. And the the housing project is again, just one block away. So with that, I thank you very much, if you have some questions, I'm happy to try and answer them. We did leave some of the dignity cards, hopefully you guys all have the opportunity to have them. We've got pushing two hundred thousand of those that we've distributed to the community to use. And we've left some of those out in the hallway as well as some of the newsletters.
Okay, any questions?
No, I thank you for your presentation and I really do like the philosophy, philosophy of a hand up instead of a handout, I think that's a real good solution.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll thank you as well. Your programs are amazing and I really appreciate the vocational training that you're giving people to give them a chance to get a job because college is not for everyone or shouldn't be for everyone. We need people to work on cars and and fix air conditioners and stuff and you don't necessarily have to go to college for that, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, thank you for your, the way you're going about it, I mean, I agree with both my fellow commissioners, probably all of them after they get done talking, but I really like the direction, my biggest problem I've ever had with food banks is that they keep working to have more and more people, so they're when their 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 model should be to work themselves out of work.
That is our goal, you know, is to have zero, we were at ten thousand during the worst of the economy that we were helping. Then we got down to about forty-five hundred and now that the COVID benefits are all getting pulled back and people whose food stamps are going back to normal or back up to like sixty-five hundred that we're open right now.
Wish some of the other food banks would take your your direction because we see them just going up and up and up and it's like they the more they get, they they they're encouraging, not encouraging it the wrong way, so. Thank you, I just had a side note, I know it's your last name, are you a native? Nevada?
I am not.
Okay.
Born and raised in Michigan, I understand our family came out of Rhode Island area, but when I got here and I went into one of the casinos to give the gal my keys so that she could park my car, she says, what's your name? And I said, Peckham, you know, Jim Peckham, and she said, no, I mean seriously. I'm like, what do you mean seriously? And and then I, four or five years later, someone brought in a poitier and went, Jim, you died. So, no, I I didn't, so apparently she had a relative named Jim Peckham and I was messing with her, her last name ended up being Peckham.
One of the original ranches and families in in Reno area were the Peckham family and they're, they were married into the Frey family, which is popular out there in Churchill County, so I was just curious.
No, but you know, if they need to adopt somebody, I'm happy to.
There you go, there you go.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Peckham, I appreciate your presentation here today to say the least. As far as you're down, I know that dental is a big thing with a lot of our kids. Did you say you work with some dentists in Lyon County?
Most of the Lyon County patients that we have, we bring into Carson City. Most of the Lion County um patients that we have, we uh bring into Carson City for the dental work. Um with the children, we used to do a lot of things in our medical clinic for kids as well as dental. But now Nevada's got such good um programs that are free to to children as long as the family signs up for it. It's much better and easier for them to go to the pediatrician that they want to and get the dental work that they want.
Right on. Um again, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I learned a lot on it.
Sign this too or no?
Uh no, we've got you on the schedule here. So we're good. Thank you. No other question. Okay, this is an action item. Do we have any public comments on this? Yes, you may stand up and again, state your name, yeah. But state your name and sign it. Yep, George.
Why do you not have donation barrels in your area? I haul my dog through the Carson.
Thank you for that. I'll talk to Michael back guy.
Good comment. Anybody further? All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. As I said, it was very informative. Can move on to six B. Time certain at nine oh five, we are past that. Public hearing, business license revelations for possible action to revoke business license one through eighty-three that has been changed. Um we do have a backup on that. Are delinquent and or noncompliant with county code. And allow the business license department to close the accounts listed below.
Good morning, commissioners. I know you're used to seeing me in another spot. Uh Stacy is out today, so I am filling in for her. Um for the record, my name is Matthew Wagner. I am a deputy clerk. Um in front of you today are businesses that are delinquent or noncompliant with county code. Um as you will see in the backup provided in this packet or the packet that you received. Um the required noticing per county code was provided to inform business license holders of delinquency or the non compliance. Um along with noticing of public hearing for this item today. This morning I did provide late backup of accounts that were brought to current. And accounts that were closed from the time of the posting of the agenda to this morning. Um and also included with that, there is another business who did bring their license to current right before the meeting. They. Ran in here to get it taken care of. Um that's business license number one, two, one, three, seven. Um that is on page three, and I believe it's the seventh from the bottom. Um so they are paid to current. Um other than that, the ones that have not spoken up to take care of their license, we are asking for. Uh revocation and to allow the business license department to um get those accounts closed.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair. Right. Whi- whi- which one did you say?
I'm sorry, um it's license one, two, one, three, seven. It should be on page three and it's the seventh from the bottom. To a transport LLC.
Anything further, commissioners? Questions, comments, public input? Seeing none, then uh I'll look for a motion on six B.
I could give it a try.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move that we revoke businesses licenses. One through eighty-three with the exceptions of of item three, which is oh, four, six, seven, two dash one. Item nine, which is zero, one, eight, six, six dash one. Item nineteen, which is zero, one, five, five, eight dash one. Item twenty-six, which is one, one, nine, zero, two. Item thirty-seven, which is one, one. Carried that one. One, one, zero, zero, five. Item sixty-one, which is one, two, one, three, seven. Item sixty-six, which is zero, seven. One, three, zero dash one. Item sixty-seven, which is license one, one, six, seven, four. Item seventy-four, which is one, two, zero, six, zero. Room seventy-five, which is one, two, zero, five, five. And item seventy-six, which is zero, eight, nine, seven, three dash one.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five zero.
Quick. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So when we get a list like this, can you uh put numbers down there, item numbers, so that we. Easier to make the motions of what item number we're removing and putting in on any list. Yeah, yeah, so so we don't have to search for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to item seven, presentation of awards and our recognition accomplishments. We have anybody stepping forward on that? No, then we will go to item eight, commissioner and county manager reports. Uh let's start with Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh thank you, Chairman Hockenbeck. Um. Uh I was able to attend uh Furley Boys and Girls Club Board Meeting, uh attended a Furley City Council. Uh meeting last night. I wanna wish Fran McKay and thank her for your service on the on the city council. Uh I'd also like to congratulate Joe Mendoza um and thank him for running and filling uh her shoes on this uh for the council seat. Um also, two Saturdays from now, I wanna encourage everyone to support uh Small Business Saturday. Um and uh maybe do some of the holiday shopping uh within our. With our small businesses here within Lion County. Um and then uh on a personal note, uh my cu- my daughter. Uh plays college volleyball and they got an at-large bid to the national tournament. And so Saturday I'll be in. Montana cheering them on. So I'll be in your old stomping grounds, Mr. Keller. So go Owls.
Commissioner Keller.
Not a bad bad place to be on Saturday, but the the weather's probably gonna be a little bad. Uh I attended the Lion County Planning Commission, uh the Smart From The Start Consortium. I too turned in uh tuned into the Furley City Council and would like to thank uh Fran McKay for all her. Many years of service uh and welcoming Joe Mendoza for his new seat. I attended the NACO Rural Action Caucus and Northern Nevada Development Authority, find out what's going on in the area. Uh. I won't be at the next commissioner's meeting. I will be in uh Sonoma County in California for the National NACO uh. Symposium Iraq, and so I'll be there and I'll, if I don't have anything scheduled, I'll tune in on Zoom, but if not. Be doing the county's business and the state's business there.
Okay, Commissioner Hendricks.
I I too attended the Lion County Planning Commission, um also the Comstock Historical District Meeting. The National Association of Counties Public Land Steering Committee uh met with N N D A and Dustin Holman. And yesterday had two long meetings of the Carson Water Subconservancy District. We did our strategic planning for the next two years. And that's it.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended the Campo meeting uh last week and wanna report two things out there. One kinda. Befuddled me and one's a good thing. One one of the items on the agenda was to approve a plan that they had hired a consultant to do. For zero emissions for their uh public transit fleet. And so so some of these um consultants, you know, they they paint a very pretty picture. And how they're gonna get twelve years of 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 service out of all these these buses and how it's gonna save money. The thing that really got me about it though. Was these buses that you can't charge them where they can run the routes the whole day. So their solution to this was to put a quick charger at one of the bus stops. Now, if you remember when we had the fire protection districts in here now, a couple of meetings ago, they were saying one of the most dangerous times. For uh lithium ion batteries when it's being charged. So let's let's put a uh let's put a charger right at a bus stop. Yeah, I think that made sense. Anyway, I voted against the plan. It passed, but I voted against it. The second thing I wanna talk about. Um we we adopted a proclamation on Crash Responder Safety Week. And I didn't know about this soon enough, or we would probably have one on our agenda for today. So I just wanna read just, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. I just wanna read a couple of the of the clauses. It says, whereas law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical personnel, road maintenance crews, public service utility workers. And tow operators place themselves in danger every time they work within inches of vehicles traveling highway speeds. To conduct valuable lifesaving operations in an adverse weather conditions. And. There is, whereas Campo reminds drivers of the moveover law, which is N R S four eighty-four B dot six oh seven. Which states if possible, drive in a lane that is not adjacent to the lane where the traffic incident is located. Unless roadway traffic, weather, other conditions make doing so unsafe or impossible. You know, a lot of people don't realize we have that law. The you if. Emergency goes outside, you're supposed to move over. And the last thing I wanted to hit is um. During Crash Responder Safety Week, Campo remembers and honors those national first responders who lost their lives in two twenty twenty-three. Fourteen law enforcement, eight fire and EMS, twenty tow operators. And three DOT SSP for a total of forty-five first responders. So if if this is an annual thing, I would really hope, appreciate um. Lion County stuff and that national proclamation on that as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh county manager, everyone.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. For the record, I've got a few things here for you this morning. So first, I wanted to give the board an update on. Uh the CDBG applications. Uh the board, as you referred, um couple of presentations. Few meetings back, um those uh two applications did not make it past the eligibility phase. And so. Um I just uh wanna give the board an uh an update on that. Um I do wanna put out a reminder that we are still seeking applications for the planning commission. We do have one seat that is open. Um and so there, we will be accepting applications through December sixteenth. Uh and those will be heard on the second meeting in December. And then um. I wanted to give the board a reminder that the first meeting in January will actually be on January sixth, not. January second. Um this one's kind of a weird one and that um state law requires that uh. The first meeting in January after an election be held on the first Monday in January. But the first Thursday would actually be before that. Uh and so there was a little bit of confusion there. I think I told some of you that it would be on the second, but it is not. It is on the sixth. So I apologize for that. Uh um but we did get that straightened out. And then finally, I wanted to um let the board know that our um bill draft request has been um. Turned into a bill and it was submitted and um introduced into the Senate. It is S B fifty-three, um and it was referred to the Senate Committee on Growth and Infrastructure. So we'll be tracking that and working to move that forward.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed an article in the paper the other day regarding lands bills. And ours wasn't included on that. What's what's the status of Lion County Bill?
We are still working through that um with our congressional delegation. There's kind of a process that you have to go through. With that, but we we have been in contact.
Cause I I did notice the Furley Lands Bill was included in that list, so.
That one had already been included in that bill. That bill was previously introduced, so um there still may be an opportunity for us to. Running out of time on that, so we'll see where it goes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, can you send us the the words, the wording of that S B fifty-three?
Absolutely. Um I I had um normally we would have put it on the board agenda. However, they gave it to us, I think, like last Friday. And we had to have it approved by early this week. And so it was after this agenda had already come out. So. I'll just go ahead and throw it on the next agenda for presentation.
So I, well, I, we have some meetings that.
I can get it to you.
Thank you.
Should be on the website. Should be on the legislative website.
It is, yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair. Um I had the same question as Commissioner Henderson um and. Answered that. Thank you, uh cause I did see you last night for this one, or is moving forward. It's not um. What reasons did they give for denying or not moving forward with those applications? Um for the grant uh this, the first, the, yes.
There might be a better answer to that one.
And that might be, this might, well, she's, this might be something we could inform people of. To help educate them when they're putting their applications.
Um so on the one for the fire hydrants, um. When you're submitting the application, there's a process and because we have oversight and helping someone else, like we're. Supporting this application. If you push submit, it goes to the state for approval. And the person who was helping to that did not understand the process and he's pushed submits that automatically disqualified them on the fire hydrant one. So it was a bit of a learning curve, unfortunately, but we encourage them to come back next year, which will be. Mayish to start applying again, so they still have an opportunity to come back. The other one for the water system up in Wheat Heights didn't meet some of the criteria that was required in the application, so. That one will not be coming back in.
Right, right on. Thank you. And then from our meeting, um when we, last Friday, um so. The builders are back up and going, or is there s- some other stuff that's, but they're going?
Um.
As far as the.
Yeah, so well, yeah, we um as you remember from last Friday, the board lifted the pause on um development Dayton. Uh we found a short-term solution for um.
Right.
For that, and so we don't have any restrictions on that. I think we might be still waiting for a couple of the forms, but I don't think that we have any. Any of those applications. I'm I'm not sure, um but maybe uh Director Henderson can give a little update in the next portion.
Perfect.
Um, thank you. No questions. All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Henderson reminded me that I didn't make any report. Uh did retain planning commission. We had a meeting on Friday. And some of the other various activities that I've been involved in, uh which we'll be talking about later today. So uh let's move on to item number nine, elected official report. Do you have any, oh, good?
Morning, commissioners. Chief Deputy Mitch Brandon in the Lion County Sheriff's Office. Uh Sheriff Pope's not here this morning. He's uh getting checked out after uh his collision with a horse out there on the highway the other night, so. Uh he did ask me to uh send his best wishes and everybody this morning. Uh he is doing well. No major injuries or anything like that sustained, just some maintenance work, make sure uh getting still functioning correctly with him. Um. Did lose a a patrol vehicle during that collision. Uh they're trying to do some evaluation, figure out what they're gonna be able to do with it, but uh. Uh the the conditions out there on the highway that night, very cold, very dark. Uh the horse uh that he ended up hitting up. When I got to the crash out there and we're looking around, I couldn't even see the horse. It was blended into the asphalt, the the terrain out there so well. Um so not a very good situation, but uh we are working through it and uh fortunately we've not any any injuries or. Or any damage to any equipment beyond just the vehicle itself there. Some happenings around the sheriff's office, but we are continuing with hiring. Uh we're down to uh four open positions as of this morning. Uh we have fifteen applicants in the background process. Including uh four category one certified officers that have worked in other agencies. So. Uh we're hoping if things stay on track, we should be fully staffed around the first of the year. Obviously, in the in the meantime, somebody will end up leaving or retiring or something like that. That seems to be the way that works, but uh. As we're putting together those hiring lists and stuff like that, uh we're anticipating, but uh even as we have that. Little bit of movement that just seems to be natural in the agency, we're able to fill those positions quickly and uh and maintain that level of staffing that we're starting to see. A couple of other projects that we're working on. Uh we have a meeting coming up with the Douglas County Dispatch Center. We're working on updating our E and B protocols and dispatch, which is the Emergency Medical Dispatching System. Uh and bringing that more into line with what's going on regionally. Uh we just had a new dispatch buzzer promoted, uh Mr. Uh, we just had a new dispatcher supervisor promoted, uh, Mr. Eric Eagleman. Uh, Eric came to us, the supervisor from Remza, and so he has a lot of experience in the medical dispatching systems. Uh, and it's done a bunch of work with the Dallowborn Mediback guys on the helicopter systems down here. Uh, so he is helping us get that system updated and uh, bring it into the twenty-first century, move away from some of the flip cards and some of those types of things. And that Douglas County is partnering with us as a, they use the same dispatching system that we do, so we can make sure that we get seamless integration of that. Uh, we definitely have a meeting coming up in mid-December with BLM. Uh, their folks are going to come down so that we can uh, start discussing updating the MOU that we have with them and doing more integration of enforcement out in some of the BLM areas. Um, and partner with the Rangers that are working out in these areas for um, our saturation patrols for events like Night in the Country. Uh, Night in the Country being moved up to the location that's at Borders, BLM in a couple of areas. So making sure that we have good security out in some of those uh, situations, as well as doing the uh, the property cleanups and some of those things with the work crews. And so um, if anybody has anything uh, going on in their specific areas with BLM that we can try and assist with in that meeting, uh, we'll be happy to try and get those things addressed uh, at that time. I believe that's going to be on December twelfth, tend to be. Um, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, we had a meeting with the Nevada Off-Road Association. Uh, we were able to sit down, talk with them about uh, some OHB issues that were experienced around the county, um, as well as ways that we can improve our enforcement actions and education with the public and our deputies going forward. Uh, timing worked out pretty well. We had firm forty-five going on up in Furley and uh, we're always looking to be more involved in programs like bike firm forty-five and making sure that uh, we put on a safe, secure event out there. That's uh, obviously an event that's grown significantly over the last couple of years and uh, you know, it's really working for a good cause. I think the number they said last night is they raised over a hundred thousand dollars at that event this year. So uh, making sure that we're doing what we can to support some of those folks, um, as well as getting out on OHB trails uh, here in the near future and uh, making sure that we're managing some of those things as they're going on. Some of the cities, it is one of the complaints that we get pretty frequently is uh, you know, the dirt bikes and side-by-sides and stuff like that around town. So uh, lots of different things going on. Um, the last thing that I would end with is uh, we are reminding the public that as the, the temperatures are getting colder here, people are warming up vehicles and doing that stuff. Please remember to keep your vehicles locked and secured up. Seems like every year we have a couple of cars drive off from somewhere, uh, people have personal property taken out of cars while they're out warming up. So uh, we are reminding people to do that and be cautious out on icy roadways, uh, here in the next couple of weeks. Travel safe during the holidays. Uh, do you have to answer any questions if you haven't?
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, just like to e- express, you know, our, our concern for the sheriff and hope he, he recovers quickly.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Keller.
We did reach out to the sheriff and talk to him. I guess he got beat up a little bit by airbags, but doing fine. Uh, just make sure that he doesn't pad the statistics for response time in the Silver Springs area since he, he was the, he, he got there before the call was made. So. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, no, thank, thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, uh, condolences and speedy recovery to sheriff, obviously. And then, uh, yeah, a hundred and ten thousand dollars from forty-five made. That is remarkable and that goes to largely to the veterans. Um, so what a wonderful organization there in Furley. Um, and again, uh, there were no solar panels blocking their their trail, which was nice. So they brought in a hundred and ten thousand dollars and didn't have to drive through or cut any fences for the, or over the top of any solar panels. So everyone stayed safe there.
Anything further? Yeah, uh, best uh, recoveries for the sheriff. And also, um, the uh, Lyon County VIP came to my house the other day, uh, for some county business. Uh, please thank them for their volunteer work. And uh, you know, they're, they're always out there and about and it's nice to have the volunteers out there doing the extra work that uh, saves you, you time and not having to go through all those other little issues that uh, most deputies have to do without the volunteers working. So thank you very much and send my thanks to them.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. They do a fantastic job. They're uh, just about triple the workload that there were a couple of years ago. You know, we just had a meeting with them. They were briefing some of those statistics. And so uh, we are compiling those for the the end of the year report and looking forward to seeing the, the final work brought from, from that volunteer unit. But uh, it is pretty impressive, the, the amount of work that those those volunteers turn out for us. So thank you for recognizing that.
Yep. Thank you, Ben. Any other elected official reports? Not, we will move on to appointed official reports.
Good morning Commissioners, Gavin Anderson, Lyon County Community Development Director, Director for the record. Um, just wanted to provide a quick update as regard to billing permits and applying applications, um, prior to the temporary hold and, and now that the temporary hold has been lifted. Um, so some keys to statistics since October seventeenth, um, Board of County Commissioners meeting. Permanent applications received on the billing side, we've had a hundred and thirty-one, which is slightly below average. Um, obviously because of the temporary pause, total permits issued, um, since the October seventeenth meeting, we had thirty-four issued, thirty single-family residential permits for commercial permits. And then as far as inspections, we had seven hundred and sixty-six inspections completed since the October seventeenth meeting. Um, now going on to the permits affected by the temporary hold. Uh, so we had twenty-seven single-family residential permits, um, processed since the hold has been lifted. Uh, so we've seen twenty-seven applications come in since, since Friday, which has been really good for us. Um, and then during the hold, we had eight permits for single-family homes that were placed on hold, um, during that timeframe. So just eight permits affected during the hold. And then since the, the pause has been lifted, we had twenty-seven permits come in. As far as building applications, everything's now proceeding as normal. Um, obviously we'll have the conditional lawsuits on the planning side of things. Um, we're still at a temporary hold just because that agreement's still being finalized with the district attorney's office. So it's just going through some of the small last editorial changes. And then once that gets polished and finalized, um, it gets executed, it gets brought to the board, um, signed by the developers and the county. And then at that point, um, once executed, we can process those final maps and say permit plans. First step is probably going to be site permit, permit plans, um, just because um, the agreement right now is kind of facilitating, um, those plans and permits more. And then it has to, the language has to be adjusted a little bit slightly, just to um, coincide more with final maps and to move those forward in the process. So right now we have five site improvement applications on temporary hold, um, until that, that agreement gets finalized. And then, um, for final max as well, temporary hold. Just until that agreement gets finalized. There's nothing wrong with it. Nothing wrong with the applications. They're all just sitting there. Um, some of them, I think, I believe two of them are sitting there with checks, um, checking the applications, staying there and we're just waiting for that agreement and then we push everything forward um, as we did uh, prior to the pause. Um, I'll stop right there. If there's any questions on applications or permits.
Uh, Commissioner Hendrick.
Do you have a timeline for that? Be completed?
That, the agreement?
Yeah.
Um, I'm hoping this week, like I said, it's just small editorial changes within the district attorney's office. So as soon as they get that back to us, we'll be off.
Anything? Anything further? Oh, okay.
And then, uh, just a quick update and some larger projects we're working on within community development. Um, so we are working on the, the master service agreement for county engineer, county survey and inspection services. So that comes up in December. So, um, we advertised it in October fourteenth, um, this middle due date was uh, last Friday, November fifteenth. So we have a two-week evaluation period where we can, we received three submissions. Um, and at that point, um, they get sent out to department heads and staff for them to review and score their point system within the instructions packet. Um, and then come then the evaluation period is November twenty-ninth and then selection date, um, if there's viable candidate would be December second, where MSA agreement. And then we're also working on uh, proposing an RFQ for uh, professional services agreement for the Silver Springs Airport. Um, so that is expiring, um, with uh, Armstrong, which is now Lochner, um, coming December nineteenth. So we're trying get that, that ball rolling and uh, get an RFQ out there for uh, quality submissions to come forward and kind of go through the same process as far as uh, reviews scoring in the selection. Uh, like MSA went forward with. Um, another note is uh, the twenty twenty-four building code adoption process is coming come pretty quick. Um, so right now the final draft will be sent to uh, steering committee for a final review. I sit on that committee on behalf of the county. Um, that final version will be sent to the government, governor's office and their uh, energy. Forget the actual name of it, but it's like their energy department, uh, for final review and approval. Uh, once that's reviewed and approved by the state, that version gets posted to the NNIC website. Um, and then at that point, it's the counties and the state's responsibilities to then take that as those documents, amend them accordingly, and bring those amendments to the board for adoption if we choose to, choose to adopt twenty twenty-four building codes. Um, it's going to be a kind of a lengthy process. Most cities and jurisdictions that I've talked to kind of thinking about full implementation by June, July timeframe, but of course, um, we'll take that step by step as far as that timeline. And then we're also working for, um, the twenty twenty-four drainage guidelines, um, which uh, got approved by the boards who are still working with the county engineer as far as implementing that program. Um, and that was just receiving, um, that modeling efforts on the front end for those applications. So, um, individuals, whether they're single property owners or big large developments, had consistent modeling information to move forward with their projects. And it's all related to those air drainage master plans. Um, so basically giving them flow depth and velocities to work with at the start instead of them having to hire engineers. And then you get perhaps maybe different modeling information. So now we're working on a consistent platform moving forward, which is going to be great. And then the last is the CRS program introduction. So we're just continuing to gathering those documents and then implementing small measures in the meantime that, um, will hopefully get us some more points. So we can get, um, a larger discount potentially for uh, those uh, footprint, um, development properties and their policies.
Anything? Questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will go on to eleven. Unless there's any further appointed official reports. Seen, oh. Yes. Yeah. You're ready for eleven. Okay. Advisory board reports.
Good morning. Just for the record, um, I just wanted to go over a couple of items with the advisory boards. Um, as compliance is due. A couple of months uh, back, I sent out a reminder to the advisory boards to please make sure if you're not returning to hand over any information or documents to your other board members into our compliance files so that we can make sure we're not missing anything. Um, I'm going to follow up this next day or two with another email asking that they do put on their agenda, um, in January that their compliance was completed or where they're at with their compliance, so that they can send you a letter of transmittal to give your report of where they're at. And then following that will kind of see where we're at. So that's where we're at on compliance. So if you have any questions about that.
Commissioner Keller.
How are they doing on their compliance?
Um, I've been kind of going through some of the, um, Google files that we share and there's quite a bit missing still. I did kind of a quick check this morning. So that's why I was going to follow up with another email. Um, communication's been lacking on their part with me. So when I do send out those emails, I'm not getting a lot of response back or questions. So email can be really difficult to communicate. So we'll kind of see after this email how things are going. Um, I can start making some phone calls. Reach out to the chair. They always feel like on IRS, I'm going to do an audit. So they love hearing from me this time of year. So hopefully they'll answer my phone calls. But, um, that's, yeah. So if you can lend out some support, you go to their advisor boards. If you can get a report from yourselves, I really appreciate your support on that.
Will do.
So next item, um, the central line vector control board, uh, we just did a bid out for their ground treatment. So then we're going to move forward with the contract coming forward, hopefully soon for that, for you. Um, more importantly on their board, they're missing one person to fill their board to be complete. This board does not have a term that expires. So a lot of people that are on there have been standing members for years. So the problem we're having is the software aspect, understanding open meeting law. So they really truly need someone who's an ambitious secretary. And we know how hard that is to find someone to fill those shoes lately. So if you do know of anyone who's willing to take on that task, we really appreciate it. The last few agendas, I've really helped them really one-on-one getting that stuff forward so that we can get some of their tasks completed. So that's just an update on their board.
I got a question. Why, why don't they have a term limit?
I'm not sure why that was set like that. I'll have to go back and review that. It's an interesting board, but it's something that I can send out as a, um, email if you guys like to see, can review it.
Yeah, I'd like to see why.
Anything further?
So another idea I have, uh, with the secretaries and that not being a really wanted position, something that we can look at is a spotlight or highlight, either do it during our board meetings under presentations and awards. We've done that before, but, um, the commissioners usually make a suggestion of who they want, and then we put it on the agenda, or we can do it during their training and have the commissioners there to give them some awards and recognition, recognition, if that's a preference. So that's something for you to think about if you want to do something like that, that might foster a little bit more communication respect for that position. Um, so the handbook, uh, we kind of put that on hold with all the Kgos that we've experienced the last few weeks. We're hoping to get that brought to you in January and I reached out to, uh, the planning department. They're going to make that list. So I'll follow up on that, see where they're at on that draft. We would like to get that done as soon as possible because we have to start doing our annual training right after that. So I just wanted to give you an update. Um, Sue and I are working on maybe doing a little bit different uh, presentation next year. We're, we're going to work on that. So if there's any ideas you want, reach out to me.
Anything on that? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, I was going to see if, I don't think we have anything else. And uh, as far as advisory. Do we have any advisory board reports? Seeing none? Then, uh, yeah, we will take a break. Uh, what do you want? Five minutes? So till, um, let's say ten, twelve. Speeding back to order. Uh, we will move on with item twelve consent agenda action will be taken on all items, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So today's items are twelve A through twelve I. Uh, I'm going to request twelve C to be polled and anybody else?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull twelve B.
Twelve B. So we have twelve B and twelve C being polled. Any, any further? From commissioners, from the public? If not, then uh, look for a motion on item twelve. Anybody want to jump at that?
Chairman Hockley, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, uh, to twelve A through twelve I, pulling twelve B and twelve C.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, let's go to twelve B for possible action review and accept travel claims. That was yours.
Yeah, th- thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, there's just a couple on here that, that that I, I didn't realize that we paid for these. So and I'm looking at juvenile probation in particular. And why are we paying trans, why are we paying per diem to transport somebody to Fallon?
So Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record, the county uh, personnel policy has a travel section in it. And it says no reimbursements for meals will be allowed when traveling within Lyon County. Or if the employee's regularly assigned work area includes other counties. So that's not a regularly assigned work area when they go outside the county. For those purposes, they do it on a moment's notice when they have to pick up a juvenile and take it there. It's not like they report Monday and Tuesday, you're going to be here, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you're going to be there. So with that, what we've always done is paid for under the policy. We pay for any travel that are during the, um, meals for travel, whether during hours specified with laws.
This doesn't make sense to me. It, it really doesn't. You know, we got a person working in Lyon County. They, they've got, part of their job is to take these kids to the and that if they don't leave Lyon County, we don't buy them lunch. I just don't see why we're buying them lunch. It's just because they drive to Fallon. But if you say that's the policy, then I guess that's the policy, something that future boards may want to look at. But if you say that's the policy, then I guess that's the policy, something that future boards may wanna look at. I, the money's not a lot, but it adds up. And with us trying to tend to every penny, I don't really think we should be buying lunch for somebody just to drive to Fallon. My opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Anything on that thing? Anything further on that? Any other commissioner comments? Any public comments? If not, then I guess we'll.
Mister Chair, I moved that we. Review and accept the travel claims as presented.
Alright.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, on twelve C for possible action approved, the October thirty first, twenty twenty four highway policy statement workshop minutes. Uh, I just noticed a correction that needed to be made on page two of the minutes. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, this is the uh, comment. Commissioner Henderson stated he would like to have a pre- presentation from the N dot director. Or senior leadership. The original minutes, uh, as presented in our packet said N dot. Uh, Director of Leadership. Uh, there isn't any Director of Leadership uh, or Senior was left out. So that's the correction there is just uh. The wording should be N dot Director or Senior Leadership. Uh, just a correction to the minute so that I can approve them. After the meeting today. Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Yes, it is definitely clear the N dot does not have a Director of Leadership.
That's correct. I, I looked everywhere to see if we maybe had one. But we didn't. Uh, so if there aren't any. Input or questions from the public, and I will make a motion. Uh. On twelve C to approve the October thirty first, twenty twenty four highway policy statement workshop minutes as corrected.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hockley, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Twelve C passes five zero. Okay. We will move on to the regular agenda, item thirteen. Juvenile probation for possible action approve and interlocal agreement between Churchill County and Lion County. For Churchill County to provide Lion County with temporary juvenile detention services in the amount of. Five hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents for the period July first, twenty twenty four to June thirty, twenty twenty five. For six guaranteed detention beds with a provision for additional detention beds at the rate of three hundred dollars per day. Yes, sir.
Morning, everyone. Uh, Brian Kirkley, juvenile probation chief. For the record, um, yeah, happy to be here to see you guys again. Um, we're, we're still at six beds. Uh, just to, for historical context, we've, we started at six beds back in twenty ten. And of course, Lion County's continuing to grow. Um, six beds is becoming a crunch, and the reason why is because these are our guaranteed contracted beds. We do have the ability. To go over if they give us the discretion to at Churchill County, and we also have a couple of facilities. Uh, in Carson City detention. As well as Douglas County detention, that at their discretion, we can uh, we can kinda use them as a spillover. The problem is they're growing as well. And so what we're seeing is a real crunch. I, I have been working with Mr. Uh. Mister Haskins as well as uh, Josh to try to find solutions, but it's, it's just something that we're gonna have to be creative about. So.
Any commissioner questions? This is an every year event. Fortunately, we, we have people that need to use those beds.
And I, I have the original contract. I'm not sure if that's possible for you to sign this one. This is the one that came directly from uh, Churchill.
Um, yeah, I usually sign everything at the end of the meeting here.
Oh, perfect.
We're just. It's all piled up. It's all piled up for me.
Sound good.
Okay, um, any input or questions from the public? Oh, go ahead.
Thank, thank you. I'm, I'm just curious to the three hundred dollars a day for the extra beds. You know, cuz. That's thirty dollars more than we're paying for other beds.
Correct, yeah. And I, I wish that that was something that uh, you know, we had more control over. This is something that's coming directly from those detention chilling nets. That's the right we're being charged, and I, I anticipate that going up with the other. Out of, uh, out of county agencies, so Churchill and, or I'm sorry, Carson and Douglas. Yeah, I, I have very little control over those things.
And, and do we use those six beds on a regular basis?
So currently, uh, we, we're not at our sixth capacity, but what we've found in the last, as I mentioned, I've been um, coordinating with. Mr. Haskins on this and Mr. Foley is that. Uh, it, it, it can be a lot of times where we are maxed out capacity wise. We have kids who are court ordered. Uh, to be in that detention bed space. And so we have to be real creative when we, when we see, because one of our biggest priorities, of course, is public safety. And so we wanna make sure that if a kid is doing something that they need, they need to go to detention for, they have a place to go.
That's too bad we can't rent the unused beds back to Churchill County.
Yeah, uh, I'm fine with this presentation stuff, but uh, over the next year, maybe we can have something from the county that. Well, why we don't have our own facility and why it cost us, why we do this compared to. Maybe I'll get an answer right now.
Oh, here we go.
Josh Foley, Lang County Councilor for the record. So there was a population cap in, in the uh, N R S. Because over a certain population, you are required to have your own juvenile detention uh, facility. When we came close to that cap back in the. Well, it's probably around two thousand ten, two thousand eleven timeframe that we came across that cap. The ability to fund much of anything at that time was very, very limited. Uh, we've gotten a bit better, but we're not where we would love to be. With that being said, we had the statute changed so that if you have a. A joint used juvenile facility or joint facility, then that qualifies for it. So Churchill County at the time approached us and said, we wanna build a new juvenile detention center. We would like to build it extra. We're not gonna charge you a dime for the additional beds that we put in any of the capital. No cost for you. What we want is operational costs going forward, and we'll guarantee you six beds in that if you will do that for six beds. For us, that was a replacement of six beds that we used to have in Winrick years ago that. The judges decided to take out of Winrick and just make it non-detention because they didn't like the mix of. The detention youth with the treatment for drug and alcohol, uh, substance abuse. We created dynamics. Um, that were not favorable in their opinion. So they took those beds out because we used to use that in Lion County. So we replaced them with these beds. We've had a number of discussions over the years and a number of them recently with juvenile probation on what would it take for Lion County to do that? The capital costs are prohibitive in and of themselves and finding the right location. But. Operational costs will probably be over two million dollars in here. You can see the cost of that versus what we're paying the other counties is significantly more. So. We haven't grown up enough financially as a county. To have uh, been able to do that yet. And that's the reason why it hasn't been on the agenda. Um, we're still brainstorming and working with juvenile probation, the judges on what are our options going forward? At what point? Do we trigger that? And when we trigger it, it's still gonna be five to ten years before we actually have a facility funded and built. Attention. Possibly three if you get the property and all the planets.
Thank you. I just wanted to stay on top of the trend and everything else. And so if we're gonna see that coming within ten years, we should be having those talks and finding the locations and.
And trust me, um, Chief Kirkley has been having those discussions to his credit and we've been working through and brainstorming on those. Those trying to figure out how we get where we're wanting.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Foley. Um, so Winrick, how many, uh, and if you don't know the answers to this, uh, fine. Maybe I should know the answers, but who, uh, how many counties utilize Winrick right now?
That's a tough part because we've got five member counties, but then they contract with, I think it's two or three others. It's eleven judicial district. That contracts pays a hundred and ten thousand a year to provide uh, one or two beds. It fluctuates for their youth as well. So you've got, you have Douglas, Carson, Story, Lion, Churchill. Those are the five member counties and when they're bringing in mineral, Pershing. And nine, is that what it is? And. And there's one other county. It's possibly nine. It might be one hundred. I don't know where it is, but it's uh, somewhere in Nevada.
And that, and that is a county facility?
So the way it was uh, originally created, the judges went to the legislature, said we wanna create this facility. The legislature funded the construction of the, the building itself. So that was a straight grant that went through Lion County. And we built it. The provisions of the interlocal agreement with all of the different counties on that were that we. Um. That it was Winrick's to be there to use until such time as Winrick decides not to be there and to use it. In which case that land and building revert to Lion. If that will happen.
So it's a Lion County building, but do we, so do we get any, you said it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars membership fee or?
We pay. Judicial District pays because they're not a member county. The member counties, we have an interlocal agreement between all of the counties. And there's a formula based on school population and on bed usage. That we calculate on a rolling average. I think it's a three-year rolling average. Actually five, but I think it's three on those. And then we take the operational costs and allocate them out to the counties like.
Alright. And then what, and this may have been covered too, just trying to think outside the box and how we. Create something within the county. There was a. Prison or something right next to Silver Stage High School. Where, what is that again?
So that used to be a women's prison.
Yes.
State operated. I don't actually, I don't know who operated. I believe it's on private property. It's not on sewer. Or I should say it's not on a sewer plant. It does takes care of its own sewer on septic, I believe. And its own well, so it's not on longer and sewer. The county has evaluated that, um. The discussion, if I recall this correctly, and I've slept a couple of times since those days. Was that it would almost be cheaper for us to demolish the building and start new if we're gonna be on that parcel. That's something would be suitable for our needs.
Right, thank you. On that one thing, the state owns it. The property.
Okay.
And so it's a state thing, and we could have leased it from them for like a dollar or whatever, but they don't get rid of properties. And uh, there's also deed restrictions on that property.
Anything further? Okay, any public? Questions or input? Seeing none, we will move on with the motion for thirteen A.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve an interlocal agreement between Churchill County and Lion County for Churchill County to provide Lion County with temporary juvenile detention services. In the amount of five hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred. Five hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents for the period July first, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. For six guaranteed detention beds with a provision for additional detention beds at the rate of three hundred dollars per day.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, and uh, we do need to probably have a discussion on what we were. Uh, discussing with you and um, Mr. Foley as far as options. Yeah, that options in the future. Thank you. Move on with fourteen emergency management for possible action except an F Y or F F Y. Twenty twenty four Homeland Security Grant Program. Uh, award from the Nevada Office of the Military Division of Emergency Management in the amount of sixty thousand. To retrofit an existing mobile command vehicle with emergency communications equipment and supplies and allow. And to allow emergency manager to sign the grant award. Go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. Um, Ms. Allison is at a conference this week, so she asked if I would uh, fill in for her on this one. Um, pretty self-explanatory. It's uh, um. Upgrade the um, mobile command vehicle that we have, um, but. Put an emergency communication equipment in there, so if we ever need it, it's.
Questions? No questions. Alright, any public uh, question on this? If not, then we'll look for a motion on fourteen A.
Chairman Hockley, I'll make a motion uh, that we accept a F F Y two thousand twenty-four Homeland Security Grant. Uh, program H S G P award from the Nevada Office of the Military. Division of Emergency Management, the amount of sixty thousand dollars to retrofit. An existing uh, mobile command vehicle with the emergency communication equipment supplies. And allow the emergency manager to sign the grant award.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Fifteen, moving on to advisory board appointments. Fifteen A for possible action appoint up to two members to the Walker River Weed Control Board. With one term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty five, and another term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Looks like we have one application. Go ahead.
Just standing here if you have any questions.
Oh. Alright. Let's get to that area.
Chairman, I'll make a motion if we do uh. Public participation, I guess, on that one, and then I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, um, do we have any commissioner questions? Any public participation? If not, one application and two positions. So that seems relatively simple on that. Let's uh, go ahead and look for a motion.
Alright, thank you, Chair. Uh, make a motion that we appoint. Um, or accept Scott Huntley's application to become a member of the Walker River Weed Control Board. With the term expiring December thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
Second. Question on the motion.
Question, go ahead.
You said accept his application or we, we're appointing.
Appointing. Appointing his.
Yeah, we have his application.
Uh, well, yeah, accept his willingness to participate on this ever. Sought after committee.
Yeah, appointment will be made for Scott Huntley. Got it. Um, so that.
Yeah, I just wanted the motion to reflect that he's being appointed.
Appoint, appoint him. So we've got a, a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Now we gotta make some selections here. Fifteen B for possible action appoint up to four members to the advisory board to manage wildlife. The board to manage wildlife with one term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty five, and three terms expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty seven. We do have five people that are applying for four positions. Any uh.
Chairman Hockley, if I may speak a little bit to this, I know uh, Mr. Osterman and Mr. Crawford have been on this committee. Um, I believe their terms are just expired. I would like to move that uh, we accept the renewals. Uh, application from Mr. Osterman and Mr. Crawford to start our discussion.
A second tap.
Okay, so at this point, we've selected, uh, or you want to appoint.
A point, yes.
Um, Michael Osterman and Joseph Crawford in your motion on that. Uh, we have a second one that.
I've also identified the term, please.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, I would like to appoint um, Michael Osterman and Joseph Crawford. Uh, with terms expiring December thirty first, two thousand twenty seven. Thank you, Aaron.
Okay. So. I will take, we've got a motion on those two, and one motion for two people on that appointment. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so those two are appointed to terms ending twenty twenty seven. And, and now we have. Sherry Sue Flynn, Gavin Henderson, and Daryl Scoopina. Sherry Sue Flynn, Gavin Henderson and Daryl Scoobina. Um, do we have any motion for the following two appointments?
Chairman Hockney, I'll. I'd like to, uh, see, I see, um, Ms. Flynn has applied for the Animal Control Board as well. In lieu of that, I'd like to, um, for the board to move with, uh, Mr. Gavin Henderson. Uh, pointed to the board till December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, and Mr. Daryl Scabina. Uh, to the board, um, with the term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second, I'm under comment.
Okay, let me get, I got, uh. You're the second on that, Commissioner Keller? All right, and I've got a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, so we have selected or appointed, um, Mr. Scabina to a term of twenty twenty-five and, uh. Uh, Mr. Henderson to a term, uh, to twenty twenty-seven, and now we have a comment by Commissioner Keller.
I was just gonna state, the fact that Cherry's on both of those doesn't mean that we were. Moving down to the second one guaranteeing her a spot.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I would agree with that, um, could I make a comment as well, Chair?
Yes.
I I value all of our advisory boards, um. This one, this board, having served on it for several years, um. I just want to throw kudos to the Department of Wildlife. They listened to this board on a lot of difficult, um, decisions. On a lot of highly contentious, um, areas and, um, so. The, um, I just want to give kudos to the Department of Wildlife for, for, again, for listening to our local board. And to these, uh, folks that have put their name in the hat because, uh, it is, uh, very important. To outdoors folks, um, uh, and and I just want to thank all of these, uh. Folks for putting in for this committee.
Okay, Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
I too, I'd like to thank him for being on there, uh, we don't get to see it here on this board, they don't report to us. But they report to, uh, to Nevada, and a lot of it has to do with our hunting, fishing and using the outdoors, and it's, it's real important. Uh, a lot goes into their decision-making, they, we don't see the whole picture, so sometimes you get a knee-jerk reaction, how they did this or that. And a lot of thought goes into what they do, so I really appreciate that part, I've attended it a few times and. I appreciate them, I wish they would come here and give us a report of what they did, and so we were knowledgeable, knowledgeable about it, but. It's all.
Yeah, we can look into that, if we can.
We're always welcome to attend their meetings though, too.
Yeah, they're, they're in Silver Springs, so.
Okay, so we will move on down to fifteen C for possible action, appoint up to three. With term, two terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and one term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And we have a late backup on that for, um, uh, W Chauncey Ho. Should be able to add, we should add that to it, um. We do have five applicants for three positions. Any discussion on that, commissioners?
Yeah, I think we have two, um. They're sitting on that board right now. So I'd like to make a motion to, um. Appoint Amber Nelson. And Vanessa Stewart.
Right.
They don't have a term. See. I put Vanessa Stewart, uh, term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And Amber Nelson to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, so I have a, uh, motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. The, for the appointment of, um, Amber Nelson, term ending twenty twenty-five and Vanessa Stewart, term ending twenty twenty-six. Do I have, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So those two appointments are made with a five zero. And we have one appointment left, um. Between Sherry Flynn, Ashley Tony and Chauncey Poole. Do I have any?
I do have a comment on one of them, uh, I believe one of them is actually. They're, they're both, both applicants are, are, uh, work within the community as volunteers and. And sit on other boards, but, uh, Ashley is actually working down there, I believe. Is it Ashley? Yeah. The volunteers down there right now.
She's a volunteer at the, uh.
At the.
Shelter.
County building at the, yeah, at the shelter, so. I think her heart's into it, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, well, do we have a motion or not?
Make a mega motion.
Point, yes, you can appoint.
Oh, point Ashley Tony to. A term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Animal Control Board, second.
All right, okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chair, did we do public comment, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, I didn't have public comment. All right, seeing no public comment, then we'll, the, uh, motion will stand and the vote will stand five zero. All right, move on to something a little easier, fifteen D for possible action, appoint up to three members to the Mound House Advisory Board. With terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and we have one applicant, Heidi Marty. And then, any comments on that, Commissioner Henderson?
When you're ready for a motion, I'll be happy to make it.
Okay, any public comment?
I want to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
We're, we're appointing one to a, how many member board? Five, okay, so this would, I was making sure it wasn't a three-member board.
Yeah. And then I readvertised, um, it and then come back in January.
That was my.
Okay, so no public comment, then we will for a motion.
Well, thank you, Michelle, I have a comment as well, too.
Okay, go ahead.
This, this board is, is losing a lot of experience, and a lot of it's due to power handling of the community center. But I want to publicly thank Melinda Cash and Jeff Trobich for their service on this board. Um, I'm glad to see that, that Heidi stepped up, that she's the only member of the board that's probably under forty. So it's really nice to have some, some youth involved. So given that, I would, I would move to appoint Heidi Marty to the Mound House Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor say aye. Okay, appointment of Heidi Marty to term ending twenty twenty-six. Fifteen E for possible action, appoint up to two members to the Silver City Advisory Board with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And we have Eric Oberman, or Obermeyer, I'm sorry, um, as our applicant.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are all our advisory boards five?
No, this is three.
Yeah, Silver City.
So. Two members, so this wouldn't give them a quorum anyway. So instead of moving forward with our application, should we just keep applying or, because you're just appointing for someone to sit?
Um, so if we don't have this person appointed, then they won't have a form from January.
Okay, so this is your two quorum, two, okay.
All right, any other questions, any public comment? I'll look for a motion for, uh, Mr. Obermeyer.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we appoint Eric Obermeyer to the Silver City Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. For possible action, appoint up to two members to the Smith Valley Advisory Board with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. I have Jonathan Turner, he is our secretary for this board. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for any commissioner comments? Or any public comment? And I'm gonna make a, uh, motion to appoint Jonathan Turner to the Smith Valley Advisory Board. With term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hockney, second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, so we have, uh, Mr. Turner with an appointment to the board again. December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, ending term. All right, uh, fifteen G for possible action, appoint up to eight members to the Smith Valley Park and Recreation Advisory Board. With three terms expiring thirty, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and five terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. I'm not gonna do anything on this because my wife is on this board, so therefore, do we have any commission comment?
I've got a question.
Yes.
Put on my glasses, make sure I'm reading it right. Appoint up to eight members?
Mm-hmm.
How many members are on that board?
Well, we can have up to eleven.
Yeah, there's a significant.
Yeah.
So we had a couple of vacancies and a couple, um, expiring terms.
Yeah.
So what's, what's their quorum and how many people are there now?
Quorum would be seven.
Yeah, we've got, we've got seven.
So I would, I would estimate that they're, they're missing three.
Or six, I should say. Yeah, but we've all, we've been missing three forever.
Um, well, if you have eleven members on there and you need eight members.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't follow that.
Yeah, it's six, yeah.
This would make it six.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this would make the quorum.
Yep.
Gotcha. Nope, that's all I had, it's just the way it was worded, eight members, it's a pretty big committee.
That and the fair board, yeah, they're the two biggest boards.
Okay, so, um.
Ready for a motion, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, any public input, didn't see any public input, no hands, uh, let's go ahead and look for a motion on, uh, fifteen G. Like they can all have a term to twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion to appoint. Brandt, is that Hiles or Hills? Hiles? Mark Phillips and Debbie Hockaday. With a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six to the Smith Valley Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Hendricks, all those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Move on to fifteen.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, didn't you say you weren't, weren't gonna be participating in this one?
Yeah, as far as making any, uh, appointments.
Make a motion.
Making a motion or, or, yeah, a, a, a motion for appointment.
Yeah, he's not required to stand or anything, yeah.
Okay, yes.
I'm not going to jump in on that as I let you guys do what you wanted to do, and, uh, still feel like I can vote.
Just wanted to clarify.
Absolutely, keep me straight, keep me out of jail. Um, go on to fifteen H for possible action, appoint up to two members to the Stagecoach Advisory Board. With terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And we have, uh, Andrew Merritt, Timothy Lee Frank and Amanda Bernan, and we had a late backup with Marilyn Cooper. I think there's two members, Frank and Bernan that are on the board already, yes.
Um, I, I don't need to make a motion on this one, but I, I would like to say that, uh, um. I believe Amanda Bernand is unbelievable in that committee, and so, um, whether the discussion comes down to. Um, not sure who, um, I will obviously be voting for Amanda Bernand as one.
Okay.
Chair Hockday?
Yes.
Um, both Amanda and Timothy Frank are serving on the board now, and they're both doing a great job. I would like to see those two remain, but the other two applicants are also great applicants, I'd like to see them continue to apply as openings come up.
Maybe one of them would like to be on the vector control board. Meets in stage coach.
Um, okay, any further comments, and we'll have a public comment? And Commissioner Hendricks, did you have a, uh, input on this motion?
Yeah, I moved that we appoint Timothy Lee Frank and Amanda Bernand to the Stagecoach Advisory Board. With terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So congratulations to all the new appointees and the continuing appointees. Item sixteen, county manager backup in front for possible action provides staff with direction to respond to the state of Nevada application number three. Or nine, three, eight, seven, seven T filed on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four for a proposal to temporarily change the place. And manner of use of a portion of water right claims of the Walker River adjudicated. In the Walker River Decree. As a result, the Board of Commissioners pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute five thirty-three dot three, six, three. Shall consider the request and may provide a recommended course of action to the state engineer that is non-binding. Means we don't have anything to do with it, let's go ahead, we'll press on, so.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, so. The Division of Water Resources sent us this request to put on this, on, put this item on the agenda. Um, it is, um, for, uh, as, as Commissioner Hockday mentioned, uh. Application for a temporary change of use, um, for some water rights. So the application was filed by the Nevada Department of Wildlife, uh, um, it has to do with some water rights that are. Um, at the. Game Ranch down here, in Mason Valley, um, and they're proposing. Because they're not using those water rights currently, they're proposing to send them down to Walker Lake, um. This is an application, I, I spoke with, um, Bert Ryan. The Walker River Irrigation District, the, this is an application that has already gone forward once before, so it's a renewal. And so, uh, the board can choose to take action on this or, um, similar to the one that was infirmly. We don't have to take action on it if the board chooses not to, um, the one, uh. Piece of information there that Bert did share is that if the board doesn't, uh, provide any comment on it. Um, if for whatever reason we wanted to dispute it later on, we would actually have that, that right because we didn't provide comment on it in the first place, so. I, it's really kind of for the board, right?
Yep, and as we discussed, whatever we did anyways, non-binding. Um, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair, so it's guaranteed to make it through Weber and make it down to Walker Lake.
I don't know, I don't know about that, I just know what the application is for. Four point, I think it was like four point two nine cubic feet a second, uh, so. We're not talking the huge amount, I guess, for whatever reason, they're not using it at the, at the game ranch right now, so. What the wildlife management.
Yeah, it's, it's nature, we have no control, um. So I kind of recommend we just take no action again, uh, I mean, that's, it doesn't really matter, it's gonna happen, they're gonna do it. Um, and any questions on that, any public comment?
I have a question, you said not to take action, but you said we have to take action or take a, a stand, a comment?
No, we don't have to, um.
If we ever want to fight it or do anything.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that was something.
I'm not gonna fight it, but I was just wondering, what, what is the best response here?
Yeah.
I, I like to leave my doors open.
Well, by taking no action, we have no, really, it's saying we have no comment at this point.
They will. If I may, Mr. Chair, that, that may be exactly what we want to say, is we have no opposition at this point.
Yeah.
That way we've commented, then we left ourselves open to.
Yeah, I'd go along with that, that way we, we still have standing if we wanted to.
No opposition.
Yeah, no opposition, um, just. As you and I had discussed, when it says non-binding, whatever we say, this has come up before, it's. as you and I had discussed, when it says non-binding, whatever we say, this has come up before, it's I was kind of like, oh, well. Whatever we say doesn't matter, but uh they're gonna dump the water or let the water flow and not take it out of the rivers, basically, all it amounts to.
That is my understanding.
Yeah.
Well, and that was to my point, I think, a little bit, so our intentions are for it to end up in Walker Lake, right?
Yeah.
If we take no action on it, it just sent down the river.
No opposition.
Right, but does that mean it's got to make it to Walker Lake then?
It's it's from my understanding with the, you know, water rights for dummies that I've read, it is basically, you're not, they're not gonna take their share of the water, therefore it stays in the river.
It's to save their water rights.
Yeah, it stays, they they keep it if they use it or lose it, what they're doing is giving it back to the river, basically. Giving it to the Walker Lake. Um. Motion, we have a motion to.
Do public?
Yeah, public comment, yeah.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we direct staff to respond to the State of Nevada application number nine, three, eight, seven, seven T filed on September seventeen, twenty twenty four, for proposals to temporarily change the place and manner of use of a portion of water rights claims of the Walker River adjudicated in the Walker River Decree. To respond to what's saying that at this point, Lyon County has no opposition to the application.
Second.
Okay. Good motion. Commissioner Henderson made the motion. Commissioner Keller seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, sixteen B for possible action, approve the response letter to the Nevada Department of Transportation regarding the rural engagement plan.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, so uh we discussed this at the special meeting that we had on the highway um position or highway policy statement meeting. Um, and so compiled all of those comments, uh, um, we drafted this letter that we're proposing with it.
Any questions?
Good.
I'll comment. And possible action, do we want the motion on that? I have one. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I moved that we approved a response letter to the Nevada Department of Transportation regarding their rural engagement plan.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hockday. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, sixteen C and D have been deleted.
I do want to thank Mr. Lopez on that for her assistance over.
Okay.
Good job.
Seventeen, agenda request.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Henderson?
I'm out of time.
You're out of time.
Not at this time.
No, I just want to thank, I believe, Aaron for submitting that to the insurance, head of insurance regulation in Nevada, so we'll hear back from him, but thank you.
Okay, I will go down to eighteen, final commissioner comments for today. Commissioner Hendricks, you do it again.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Aaron. I know at this time of year, she has to process all these applications, and then at the beginning of the year, she's got to get all the boards up and running, and I just really appreciate all your work.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The only comment I have is I want everybody to have a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and whatever you're doing, remember the reason for the day. It's not just to get stuffed.
I'm good. I'm good.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Just want to wish all my fellow commissioners and their families and everybody here in in Lyon County uh happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Yep, absolutely. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving this next week, and um I appreciate all the work that everybody's done this month. We've had several additional meetings and have gone through a lot of extra work in making making things better for the county. Um, final participation by the public. If anybody has any public participation at this point, please stand up and you will have three minutes, identify yourself and sign in. Anybody on Zoom? Nobody jumping up in the chambers? So I believe we do have a closed session today. Yes, we do have a closed session, so our regular uh meeting is adjourned at eleven A M.